Are we ready to go?
Down.
I'm going to call and order the work session of the Nelson County School Board. It is Thursday, July the 6th at a little after 5:00 p.m. And so, we will start with, are there any changes to the agenda?
Command, we're good to go.
Then, next up is our Efficient Resource Management, and we're going to talk about our construction update, and Tim, you are up.
I don't have as many pictures for you tonight. I've got a couple of pay apps we'll look through, just to confirm what I think you all already know, is both projects are wrapping up. What you have in front of you here is the Early Learning Center pay app, and just go to the bottom and scroll down, Carla, and we'll go to the bottom here, and you can see far left column there, the original budget on this project, $2,384 and change. We've had a total of $30,221.65 in change orders. Next column totals those two figures, and you can see over there, I believe that says 99.54 or 64% done. I'm going to let Tim fill in, and you can, if you look to the far column, that's the balance in payments. I'll let Tim fill in any blanks, about any remaining things there. I will tell you that on the 18th, we do have some change orders. We've talked, nothing that you all haven't talked about probably half a dozen times, you're probably sick of talking about it, we've talked about it so much, but the paperwork is finally together on some change orders. We'll be asking you to approve some of those things we've talked about over the last few weeks and months. Tim, any comments on the ELC?
I think just the remaining amount to be paid out is just subcontractors that have kind of corrected supplier bills invoiced, and those type items. The punch list, I think, has been completed. You can, might have some items you may go out, but we lack a handrail for the Eckers certification, which is one of the change orders.
The panels.
Yeah, Stephen's got to pick, he may have already sent you color selection to approve, but we need, okay.
Yeah.
So, the handrail's made, and then once we receive these into the panels, it'll be installed. That's the only large item I know of, to complete that project.
Certainly looks great, I think. I think, you know, folks are happy with it.
The, I know, was it last work session, there was, or we heard somewhere about there was like a piece of plumbing leak or whatever, did that get fixed?
Yeah, insurance, that was an insurance claim.
It was an insurance claim, wasn't it? I was just kind of curious, did all that get fixed?
That's been resolved, and then there was some things damaged, Ms. Walker, carpets and things like that, and the contractors are taking care of that cost. So, there's no cost to the district, that's resolved, but that has been resolved. If you want to bring up the Thomas Nelson pay app, similarly, it's a little, well, that project's virtually done as well. If you'll scroll to the bottom again, Carla, you can see the total there, $2,819. Looks like just under $20,000 in approved change orders to date, and we're finished, we're at 97.78% there. I think I, just today, I mentioned, I think it was to Carla, I said, you know, there's not really pictures, the reason why we don't have pictures, the only thing I think we could show you differently, I think we could show you a picture of the handrail that was installed outside. That's up, but other than that, there's really not much different. There's behind the scenes things that maybe have occurred, minor things, but that project is wrapping up, and I know the school's excited to get to use it. I'm sure they'll make good use of that space when it's available to them, when school starts on the 9th. So, anything you want to add to that, Tim?
So, the item, there's a change order approved to the projection screen, and the arm to lower the projector, so all that's supposed to be coming in next week or the following week, and be installed prior to school starting. We're in the punch list phase, so there's been paint touch up, and some minor things that make it look finished. So, Stephen will be going through that probably the week after next, and checking those items off, and be wrapped up.
It's beautiful.
Looks great.
It's so pretty.
Just my simple math, that one looks like it's less than 1% of the contingency, and the other one was about 1%, if I remember, which, I mean, any time that we can just about hit the nail square on the head, that's always a huge win. I know a lot of that has to do with the work that Stephen does, the work that you all do with BCD, so we appreciate you all being, on our behalf, the taskmasters on both these projects.
And when you approve additional change orders, those numbers will creep up a little bit, of course.
Sure, but I mean, still, we're talking about 1%, give or take.
Right, oh, it's great, it's been great, and just, you know, we've talked about this in these meetings, I think, a time or two, but the balance, we're required to have set aside 5% for contingency. If we spend a 1.5%, that's going to leave 3.5% that will be set aside for the next priority project, the board, whatever you all decide that wants to be used for. It will stay in the construction fund, and will be obligated for that next priority, so that's where it'll be. So, any other questions?
Tommy, I mean, I've had the luxury, I've been to several districts in central Kentucky. I mean, some of them, their completion date would have been months ago, and yet it's still not complete, so again, I mean, I think this show is just pushing forward, I appreciate what you all do.
Thank you.
That's good.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Next up is our pre-audited AFR.
If we can hang on to construction update just for a minute, John Gasser from CMTA is going to talk to you about the energy project that is ongoing throughout the district. A big chunk of it, of course, is at Bloomfield. John?
It is, and, you know, for an eight to 10 week summer construction period, it's going extremely well. We're lucky to have good contractors and good cooperation from the staff, but things are really moving well, which we're happy about, and I know you guys are too. If you all remember, there used to be two HVAC units in the corners there, and I know Kevin and Todd are really happy to get those out of the, out of the corners of the gym. I know they had issues with water, and issues with controls, and if a unit would trip during a ballgame, they'd have to get a lift out there, so one of the big items that we did was relocate those to the closet, previous storage closet, which I know Kevin and Todd are really happy about. So, on the left, you see the pictures of the new gym units, they're in that closet, and on the right, just where we're starting to insulate the ductwork to match where we reused the two runouts that go down the length of the gym. So, I believe every, all the heat pumps are hung, and the majority of them are already ducted and piped, and ready to have an electrician hook power back up, and controls to wire up, which, you know, the piping and the ductwork is the time-intensive stuff, the others go pretty quick. On the right, we've got thermostats installed, so the controls contractor's already made some headway there to do what he could. I think we're good there. So, as you all know, we tied into the Bloomfield Elementary School well field, which saved a tremendous amount of cost, because you don't have to drill new wells. That well field is sized properly for the heating of both schools, but the cooling, since schools in Kentucky are typically cooling dominant, we installed the cooling tower that you see there as kind of a peak period shave-off a few degrees when we need it, you know, graduation day, full gym, cooling periods, but that's like an identical setup to what we have at Nelson County High School, and it's the same contractor that installed that at Nelson County High School, so they're well-versed in that setup, and made a lot of good progress there. So, this picture's kind of hard to see on the left, but, you know, just a couple of weeks ago, that was all trenched in dirt, and we've got grass back growing, and, you know, our goal's always to make it look like, you know, we were never there, so if we're doing that, we've done our job. And then this was actually today's work, so this is tying, where the physical tie-in was made to the Bloomfield Elementary well field, so this is kind of the crux of the project here. We had to take Bloomfield Elementary Schools' cooling down just for a couple of days, you know, we weren't sure, we always like to under-promise and over-deliver, so it looks like we'll have that back up, you know, Tuesday, Wednesday, next week at the latest, but Kevin and his guys took care of some temporary cooling for the daycare there, so all of that has gone really as smooth as we could have asked for. And this is just a couple mechanical pictures, pumps on the left and heat exchanger on the right, but those are all the pictures I've, I've got. If you all have any questions, happy to take them.
How close do you think we'll be to have everything ready, set to go for Star School?
We're on track to meet our July 31 substantial completion date, so on July 31, we should have all units running from the thermostat. You know, we won't, we probably won't be able to log into our controls run-in at that time and set units back yet, but we will have spaces cooling by July 31, and we're on track to do that. So, that gives us about a week and a half there before that August 9th.
So, it sounds like what I would call all the major invasive type of work is done.
Yes, sir.
It's going to be, let's tweak, okay, we don't have this setting right yet, why is this not working yet? Let's figure that out.
Sure, and that's always a part of it.
Sure.
Overall, I think we're in good shape.
Well, if we're not, we're, we will hear about it, believe me.
Sure, sure.
First day.
And, you know, the staff there's been great to work with, I can't compliment them enough, and, you know, we'll, we'll take good care of them, we shouldn't have any issues.
You have questions for John?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Pre-audited AFR.
No, that's it, sorry.
Right now, we're going to move on to the pre-audited AFR.
Pre-audited AFR, I don't have anything to show you tonight, because, what is, the 6th, today's the 6th, is that sound, yeah, I think that's right. You know, we just closed the fiscal year, we're really jumping into that as we speak. Juan and I were working on, you know, some things today, I expect next week to really get into that, and my goal is to have the pre-audited AFR to you for the 18th. There have been times where we've approved that in August, depending on, you know, we just want to make sure we have an accurate document to bring you, so we limit journal entries when the auditor gets here. That's kind of tricky. The fiscal year closes on June 30th, there's a lot of stuff that has to happen, we have to get that documentation to you all in advance, and the meeting on the 18th, and, you know, we run the risk of getting written up in the audit if there are more than a certain level of audit entries, so we're going to do our best to get that to you. I think it's going to happen, pretty confident it'll happen. And the good news is, early indications are, we've been sharing this with you for some time, that we're going to end the year in a very positive fashion. You know, I expect to add to the balance to end the year with more than we began the year with, which is, of course, we don't, you know, you want to spend essentially, we're close to what you take in, you don't want to profit, to use a business term, but you certainly don't want to spend more than you bring in. And we're on the good side of that equation, I guess, and that has allowed us to come to you for salary increases, and some positions that we've talked about, I know next couple of things on the agenda, we're spending some of those things. We're going to, or we're recommending to you all to spend some of that excess revenue that we have, so I think it's good news, and we're excited to dig into it further, and on the 18th, hopefully have a document you'll be happy to approve.
Okay, so then we just go right into revision of the substitute teacher.
And, of course, on the night of June 20th, I think, 19th or 20th, whenever that meeting was, you approved the salary schedules with the exception of substitute teacher pay. What Bob and I did shortly thereafter that meeting, we started to collect some, we collected some information from surrounding districts, and what we found was, we were pretty competitive already. We paid less than some and more than others, and we compiled some data there, and, but knowing we had just approved a raise for every other employee in the district, and you're always desired to continue to be competitive with, for substitute teachers, and it's difficult to get substitutes, all that, throw all that together there, we have come back to the recommendation to increase all of their rates by $5 a day, beginning at rank five. Most of our, I think Bob will tell you, most of our subs are the rank five, that's a person that has 64 to 96 hours of college, I think that's right. Most of our subs, we have subs that are retired teachers, that we're making $125 a day, that'll go to $130, and if folks are in long-term positions, they make, currently make $150 a day, and they go to $155. So, it's recommended just increasing them all, $5 a day, you know, that percentage is different, $5, $5.70 is obviously about 7%, a 7% increase, a $5 increase for 150 is less than that, but it's still more than, it's a higher percentage increase than, than we gave on the 20th through the other class, to the other folks in the district.
How many hours a day do they normally work?
Our certified folks are supposed to work an eight-hour day.
They're rank five.
Rank five, they should be working an eight-hour day. Now, that, that's, that's more policy for certified staff.
I know, it's, it makes me sick.
Yeah.
But it's a start.
It is, I mean, it is.
It's a start.
It is.
It's a start.
And it's something, you know, we can look at, we can look at, we can look at it on an annual basis, for sure. I will tell you, we did hear from folks that got, I guess through the newspaper, maybe through the KSBA news links, heard from a district or two that, that we might be changing ours, and they're anxiously awaiting what you do, because they're going to match what we do. So, you know, these people pay less than us now, so, because they want to be competitive with us, so, but I do think this will, will continue to be competitive, and this is a nice, nice thing for our subs, so if you all like to approve that, we can get that updating our salary book, and have those printed and distributed to schools.
Yeah, well, it's not what I would like, but it's, like I said, it's a start, you know, and if we're, we're a little better than, than the average around, and, but I just felt like it's fair, if you give everybody else a raise, they need a raise too, that scale needs to be raised, and I don't think it's been raised for a very long time, three, four years.
Couple of years, maybe, I don't remember exactly.
I don't either, but it's been a while, so.
We don't raise it every year, you're right, so that's.
So, I, you know, like I said, I can live with this, but I, to me, it's just, it should be just a start, you know, somewhere along that line.
So, we have the option to vote on this tonight?
Or we need to, don't we?
Yes.
It's, I mean, it's, it's nice if you do, I think you get, we're going through the process of bringing new subs in, and giving them training, and that sort of thing even now, and so it's an opportunity to get that word out to them quickly, and print the salary schedule in a timely fashion, but it's not an absolute essential that you do it tonight, just thought that opportunity might be a positive one.
I think the earlier the better.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
Okay, I have a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
We got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. May all things be that easy.
Thank you.
Okay. Then, next up is the revision of the staffing formula.
And I know, we may have talked about this at that June board meeting, I know it's come up in some of the sessions that have been held, and our recommendation to you tonight is to increase the extra teacher allocation, and to just try to explain what that means, when we allocate, through the site-based allocation, when we allocate teachers to schools, they get, it's based on CAP. For kindergarten, that's one teacher for every 24 students. For high schoolers, it's one teacher for every 31 students. Then, in addition, we have our additional teachers. What we give, what we had been giving middle schools, 12%, we're recommending that we make that 15%, and what that's going to do for both of your two middle schools, Bloomfield Middle and Old Kentucky Home, would give them each an extra half a position. And I know both those principals are hopefully going to approve that, and are related to see that change if it happens, so, any questions you have, I'll be glad to try to answer that. Just a little bit of background on why middle schools only. High schools were already at 15%. We've had conversation, in the elementary levels, you have some grant positions, you have Title I monies that are distributed to the elementary schools, in the high schools, you have kids that are out going to college, but the high schools are fully funded as if they were at the high school all day. You have kids that attend the ATC, and the high schools are staffed as if they're in the high school all day, so both the schools on the end, on each end of the spectrum there have a little bit of relief. The middle schools don't, they don't. This will provide them a little bit of relief, and give each of those schools a half position to alleviate their, their schedules, et cetera.
And, and to make sure they understand that additional teacher allocation, that 15% of that 12%, that's at the discretion then of that site-based decision-making council, so that if they decide, and I'm completely making this scenario up, but if they decide they want an artistic dance arts teacher, that's where that kind of a position comes through, is that additional staffing position.
That's correct, okay.
What does this mean for New Haven, I mean, they're always a half position short every year, since I've been on the board.
New Haven, we did not, our recommendation does not include elementaries or the 2K8s because of their, all those schools currently get Title I funding, and they currently, in New Haven, in Boston's case, there's about 3.5 positions that are itinerant, that are over and above the standard allocation because of those K8 configurations and the difficulties with setting schedules, et cetera. So, our recommendation currently does not include that. I will tell you, Dr. Orr and I have talked, and if you made that change, if you had it affect those 2K8s, it'd be an additional half a position at each one of those schools too.
I have a question, just about the sheer financial impact.
Sure.
Getting people to not want to work half-time, part-time, I don't think is as easy as it is to get a full-time. I don't think you get the commitment, there's just a lot that goes with it. So, I would like to know, just not today, just some point you're going through this, what would be the impact on the district if we said from now on, additional teachers will be rounded up to the nearest whole position, instead of saying half? What's the financial impact of that? Just dollars and cents, because I don't think anybody would probably disagree that that would be easier for everybody hiring, easier to administer, better for the kids, it's a simple matter of, what, is it a matter of $100,000 a year, or $500,000 a year? I'd like, I'd like to know.
I think, as I sit here, I can tell you.
What is it?
Worst-case scenario, we've got 10 schools, I ought to know that, I'm sorry, but we've got, I think it's 10 schools. So, let's assume, based on this year's enrollment, it just worked out oddly that all of them ended up getting something and a half.
Okay.
Okay? That's the worst case, that's 10 schools that are getting something and a half. To make all those positions whole would be 10 additional halves, okay, does that make sense? Or five additional positions. Worst-case scenario, five additional teaching positions, based on our average salary, for our average teacher salary, that'd be about $50,000 a piece, or about $250,000 annually. That's worst-case scenario, could be less than that.
So, now, I want to make sure that I understand her question, and then the question and the answer really match, because you're saying we took every half position and rounded up, not if we took every fractional position and rounded to the whole?
No, not fractional, no, I'm saying half.
Okay.
I'm saying, once, once we get to a half.
Gotcha.
If it's a quarter, no. If it's an hour a day job, it makes no sense to me to pay some, to find it. I just have to wonder if there's not $250,000 of extra work to be done, and I don't know if we can afford it or not, I just don't know if anybody's ever really, if we've sat down and looked at the pros and cons of, of what if we were the district that rounded up to one? What does that do to our recruiting for our teachers? What does that do for our principals' morale? I'm just asking a question, I don't worry.
All right, well, I will take, just so you know, in some cases, the half a position gets, they find people that want to work that. There are rare occasions where that is what people are looking for, not very often, not very often. There are occasions where a principal will get that half an allocation and use it for instructional assistance, for a couple of people, two or three sometimes. There are other occasions where they'll use it for things like Chromebooks. So, there are other ways to use that money, doesn't necessarily mean it's the best way, and I'm sure the principals would vote unanimously to round that up, I'm sure if we polled them, they'd vote unanimously, I guarantee it, I'm sure they would, so, but if, you're looking worst-case scenario, that's a $250,000 annual cost to the district. If it's half the schools in a given year, it would be half that.
Currently, how many half-time people do we have?
How many, how many are allocated a half?
Yeah.
I don't know, that I'd have to look up.
I just wonder, you say worst-case scenario is 250, is best-case scenario, our current scenario, our current situation is 100,000.
One versus even, or even just one to two halves.
Right, right.
Yeah, it's, you mentioned about utilizing those dollars for something other than a body, a person. I know, if I remember right, that's how Thomas Nelson funded their Chromebooks, if I remember, the SBDM had their discussions and said, and the teacher representatives said on behalf of the teachers, instead of, we'll take an extra kid or two in our class enrollment, but use this money to get the technology so that the kids are able to collaborate. I mean, I remember two out at Bloomfield Elementary, whenever we would end up with half positions, and back at that time, it was Yatolyn Bieber, who was principal, she would sit with us on the SBDM and talk about, well, that's how many hours, so if it's, what's a full-time hours, 2,000, 2,050?
2,080 here.
2,080, and so she would say, well, you all got 1,040 hours, and I remember one year, we took it, and we took our three-hour instructional aids, and we added two hours to every one of them, so, because the primary grades said we'd rather have more instructional aid time than have another half a person somewhere. It's a good question, though, because if it ends up that it's minimal cost to put more resources, then it can be afforded, something to look at, but always it isn't a person that, that additional teacher allocation is upcoming.
I think another thing, when we, when we do get the AFR finalized, and we know what that number is, and know what our balance growth was, and then, of course, there's a lot of decisions that you folks have to make in a pretty narrow stretch of time here, I think it's like May to September, you approve a tentative budget, taxes, an AFR, and a final budget, and those are pretty big decisions. And one of the biggest, those are tax rates, that we generally approve in August, and those are critical to being able to do things like that, or at least try to put a dent in them. That's something to think about, but certainly, we'll have better information, be able to maybe talk more about that once we get that document, but I think that's a good, that's a good thing to discuss, for sure.
Thank you. So, do, we need a decision on this tonight, or is this something that we can think about?
I know a couple of the principals are anxiously awaiting, and again, I don't think it's going to kill them the way to the 18th.
Well, but we want to make sure, I mean, is it going to make a difference?
No, I'm, I'm fine with it, I just want to put it out there that we start thinking about, is this a cultural thing to do for the school system that will help? Do we need more teachers, more people in the schools? Are the half-time people that we're getting maybe not what we get the full-time?
Right, I see what you're saying.
You see what I'm saying? I just want to start thinking about it before the AFR comes out, to see where we are financially, and if we say, well, you know, hey, we're in a really good spot, is this one of the options that would make something better as a board that we could approve? I just kind of wanted to think about it.
But see, then they turn around and.
Use the money for Chromebooks.
Use them as Chromebooks, and then I'm get to thinking, you know, to me, you need a teacher, not a Chromebook.
Well, that's where that.
But that's not my choice.
Where that SBDM comes in play, and they decide what's going to be best for their school value.
But now, on the flip side, if it's a whole person, what are the rules on if it's a whole versus a half?
They can convert that.
They can still convert that too?
Oh, no. So, if I can give just a little bit of background on why we've brought this recommendation to you tonight, is a little different from the substitute piece. As Tim mentioned, one of the things that got a top priority in the, in the concerns and brainstorming phases was looking at the staffing formulas, and so this was something that, even though we generally approved these in January, we talked about again, but this is a conversation, Tim reminded me the other day, we've had this conversation multiple times over the years, when we said, as he pointed out from the beginning, there's some advantages that the high schools have with ATC and dual credit, there's some advantages that the elementary schools have with grants, and being Title I schools, it's these two middle schools that get pinched in the middle without having those additional flexibilities as a part of their system. And so, this is something Tim and I have talked about a number of times over the years, but this seemed like, especially with the processes that we've been through this summer, an opportunity for us to even not shortcut that process, but to go back and say, you know what, you asked us to do this, and we've already done it, and here's a recommendation that we've brought. So, that's, that's kind of the context for why we went ahead and brought this. and brought this one forward tonight. And the other piece in terms of approving this tonight or not, a little different from subpay in that, it's nice to have the subpay piece done as we're bringing folks in. But in this case, this gives those principals time to go through a hiring process and get people in place, or make those decisions however they choose to with their site-based councils, and how they would use that additional half position. So that's the timeliness on this piece.
Let me ask something though. Let's say, Oaken County Home, just an example, Oaken County Home, I know we have a formula, but if you see a need, particularly in Oaken County Home, if we see a need, or you see a need that they need an additional teacher towards two, is, are you allowed to, are we allowed to say, you get another teacher?
Well, and you all have done that. That's really what you're doing with the itinerant positions at New Haven and Boston. What you all are doing is you've identified the need there.
Yes. So we can say, okay, Oaken County Home, if you need another teacher in this particular area, or this, considering what is happening, you know, I mean, not saying anything. But let's just say, if you've got an English, and you need another teacher to limit that size of a classroom, because everybody has to have English.
So are you asking, do we have the ability to designate?
Another person for a teacher.
For a specific purpose.
For a specific school.
Specific reason.
That it has to be a teacher. You cannot use it on anything other than another body in a classroom.
And again, you all do have that. We just changed that back a few months ago, I guess, I lose track of time. But we added an assistant principal at Boston, a half-time. And then we added the other half of an assistant principal at New Haven to hold them harmless. Essentially, both of those things are really technically itinerant, or you could argue they're itinerant. Certainly, the other half at New Haven, you could argue is itinerant. We also added a, made full-time, the band position down there, that's new this year. That's another addition. And for a long time, we've had itinerant-related arts positions at those 2K8 schools, that the board provides. And they don't have to budget for in their site-based allocation, their extra positions, because of the need that you're talking about.
The one thing, now that, I'll jump in here. And while we can identify those itinerant positions, one thing I think we want to make sure that we're careful about is, both of those last examples that Tim just shared, were what I would call related arts-type positions. Because at those two schools, population sizes weren't enough to where there would be enough staffing available, plus the additional teaching percentage, that the site-based decision-making council can then go, oh, we have the positions available to provide someone ourselves, meaning at New Haven School or at Boston School, for a related arts type, or whatever it might be. In this case, it would be arts or the bands. I would say that, while I don't disagree, we've got to be careful that we don't set a precedent where we say, we're identifying another teaching position that is a district-held position. Because those positions at Boston and New Haven for related arts are district positions. They're not owned, quote, by those two schools. But that we would be identifying a district-owned position to say, this is a core subject area. Because that does start to open up a very slippery slope precedent. Because then the question will be, well, why would we not do a district-owned position for mathematics here, or a district-owned position for psychology over here? It doesn't mean that we can't identify those, but I think we have to be, I would say we have to be cautious about doing that. Because then that becomes that one recurring additional cost above and beyond. So it does add expense. It may not be much, but it does add expense. And then it is setting that precedence of, we're identifying that spot, and we're saying, that's the one that it's going to be teaching. So is that us overreaching too much in to the governing body of that school?
That's where I would say the first concern would come, even before the slippery slope, is that you're, when you start to dictate those core content teaching positions to schools, you're getting into site-based territory.
Versus the, I mean, the New Haven, the Boston, you know, and it is, it's based, to me, from my understanding, it's based solely upon student population sizes, that the staffing just was not available to provide something that's very valuable and needed, the related arts types of programs. And since both of those schools feed into Thomas Nelson High School, we've got to make sure we've got strong feeder systems for the arts programs. Being able to have, at one time, part-time positions, now it's a full-time split across the two, if I'm saying that correctly with Mr. Robinson, is that correct?
It's correct.
And splits the time into those two schools.
The two schools. So then that's building that feeder channel for the music programs now at Thomas Nelson High School, and the arts program at Thomas Nelson High School.
But I'm not talking about the arts.
I know you're not, but that's...
That's what we're saying. When you're talking about something other than the arts, I think that's where you run into risk of getting into site-based territory.
Yeah. The arts is something that I don't think any of us would deny we need. But if the site-based doesn't have the funding for it, it's our opportunity to step in and say, we'll help take care of that. But we get into the cores, then I think we start stepping over that line, the legal line into the SBDM authority.
So you had mentioned that, that out of the brainstorming, that the staffing formula came up. So what was the conversation kind of surrounding that? And what were they saying that the issue is?
I think generally, they're going to say, class size. And I'd have to go back, it's been several weeks since I looked at that initial data. But that would typically come up through the concerns being expressed as class size.
Now, what was concerned, what I was told, I was asked is, let's say the high schools, two high schools, and you've got, and we talked about this, you've got 200 more kids out here at Nelson County than you have Thomas Nelson. And let's say that your class, just imagine, you've got sophomore math, or algebra, I'm sorry, it's not math anymore, it's algebra. And you've got two algebra teachers over in one school, do you have two over here, knowing that these have more kids? Let's say on average, 50 more kids per class, per whole class. Then why does this school have two, and this school only has two, but this school has more kids in that classroom? That's all I'm saying. I've been approached three different people.
So why is that?
And I asked, and we talked about this.
That would be, that's a student demand and a site-based decision. So if one school decides, we're going to offer credit recovery, and have a teacher teach credit recovery all day, then that's going to have an impact somewhere else in the schedule that might cause class sizes to go up, or might say, we're having credit recovery teaching, being taught, instead of having algebra being taught. The other piece is the student demand. You may have, depending, you know, you may have a class, a sophomore class size at Thomas Nelson, that's relatively low for that school, and a sophomore class size at Nelson County that's relatively high for that school. So you wind up having to shift those master schedules to accommodate the student demand, because you've got more kids that need algebra at one school than at the other. They're going to have more sections of that. But that's, but that's all site-based.
Or in another way, if there's only three students that say, we'd like to have photography one, it's going to be hard to offer that as a class. But if we have 80 students, say we want algebra one, and we've got that teacher that is certified to teach that, and there may be three sections, you know, that work out to about three sections of algebra one. And, because I've had, I've had similar questions too, Ms. Berry. One of them had to do with foreign languages being taught. And so, you know, if there's, you know, one particular foreign language taught at one school and one at another, but the person says, well, I really would rather have that other one over here. It could be that there just wasn't the demand at one school. I know a lot that, I continue to hear the, well, we were always told, both schools would be the same. Well, they can be the same, because both schools and the student populations do start to develop their own identity as far as the types of courses that students are asking for, or even demanding that they have at their particular school. You know, the same thing even like with the Area Technology Center. You know, the Area Technology Center starts to build their schedule based upon the community demand, as well as the students, and what they're saying they have an interest in taking. I mean, we live in bourbon country, you know. Is it manufacturing? Is it more technical? Is it carpentry? You know, whatever it might be. You know, that may be the things that are really the demand, driving the demand for the classes. If the students are saying, I'm not interested in that, then the ATC won't be able to offer those types of classes.
So to make sure I understand, and just to summarize, to make sure I'm on the same page to answer the question consistently, and that is, am I telling the truth when somebody asks me, are there the same number of teachers allocated to Thomas Nelson as there are to Nelson County? The same, as the board, as superintendent, we, the same allocation is used across schools? Then the school itself, the principal and the site-based committee, then determine how those resources are going to be used?
That's exactly correct.
Okay.
You're talking regular air positions.
I'm talking to regular air positions. Now, I've got a follow-up. And that is, with these half positions, let's say that the middle school at Boston and New Haven don't need a security guard, but the middle school at, I don't know, let's say, Oaken County Home needs a security guard, and they were allocated half a position. Does that, does that site-based committee then make the decision, that security guard comes from that half position?
They can.
Or is that another board expense? Who's going to have to pay for that? Which doesn't matter to me, if it's needed, it's needed. But I'd like to know, I'd like everybody to understand who's making those decisions, and who's paying for those decisions. And I don't really know the answer.
Well, I can tell you, in the past, when we've had security folks, that was, the board never paid for that. That was provided initially through a grant, and then the Sheriff's Department continued it. We never paid for that. So, we don't have a precedent as to how we've handled it in the past. I can tell you that schools trade half positions and Section 6 dollars in for a lot of different things. And they could, there's, I guess, we've never had one do it, but they could choose to, to convert those dollars to a security guard if they chose to. That may, on the other hand, that may be the type of position that you all would want the board to provide, and have that be a...
I think it's a crying shame that anybody ever had to pick a security guard over a teacher. That makes me a little sick.
Right. And nobody's ever had to do that.
But, nobody's had to. But if it was an option, I just want to make sure everybody knows what their options are.
Well, in the, in the school resource, I'll use phrase, school resource officer, that I think it was former Sheriff Steve Campbell, pursued and got the federal dollars for, and, actually, before he was even sheriff.
He was.
Because he was the SRO. It was, oh, the sheriff before him.
Mike Newton.
Mike Newton, yeah. Pursued the grant, and whenever Stephen Campbell retired from KSP, Mike Newton, Sheriff Newton at the time, hired Steve Campbell to be the SRO, the school resource officer of the district. I know that, fast forward now to a couple of years ago, the sheriff decided they didn't want to continue on with that program and pulled the, because the funding had ran out, and they just decided they didn't see investing that money themselves in continuing that school resource officer. But it is, it truly probably 99% of these staffing types decisions, it is the school-based decision-making council that does make them. It's just, these are the guidelines that they are funded by. And, you know, again, going back like on the Thomas Nelson scenario, you know, I know that one for a fact, because whenever they first started, they made that decision, they wanted to go collaboration between students and students, students and teachers. Anytime, my understanding is, anytime that they had that additional teacher staffing, that site-based decision-making council, was it three teachers, two parents, made the decision, well, we're going to invest in the technology for our students to be collaborating, because we see an extra two or three kids in the class. They didn't see that as a problem. They were willing to take that on to get that other resource.
Did that first two or three years of the school's growing.
And it always is. It's always that debate of, so do we need the person, whether it's a half or full, like what you're even, we're talking about, which is something definitely we ought to think about. Or is it extra hours for the instructional aides, the classroom aides, like at the elementary level? Again, I remember on SBDM that that's what the teachers came to us and said, we prefer to have, we prefer to put more aide hours down the primary, and us in the fourth and fifth grade will give up that time. And it was the SBDM that made that decision.
It's nice to be able to have a chance to kind of talk through those things that seem maybe fundamental to those of us that have lived this dream for all of our careers. But it's good to be able to talk about that. So, I don't know if you guys, if you guys want to make a motion, you can. If you choose not to, that's fine. We really have not looked at that yet.
If we've got teachers, or if we've got principals that are wanting to kind of move...
I'll make the motion, because if we, and the main, the big reason why is because if we wait till July, that's really only about two and a half, three weeks out to the start of school. So we need to give the opportunity for those principals and the site-based decision-making councils to be able to do those interviews and pursue folks now. So I'll make a motion to approve this revision of the staffing formula.
All right, I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Sure.
I don't have a second. So then, do we want to table this?
Well, you have a motion, so you can let this fail for lack of a second.
Okay.
Or...
All right, so then, this motion will fail for lack of a second. And then, what do we do? Do we table it then?
You can make an amended motion, or you can just move on.
Okay, then let us move on, right?
Well, I, what's going to change between, can I, what's, nothing's going to change between now and the 18th, or the next meeting. Nothing about this was, is going to change. So if we don't approve it today, I mean, I don't, I don't know, I'm going to ask them, what would be different if we waited?
You have a revision you'd like us to make to that?
A revision could be, we make the middle school be a 20% additional teacher. I mean, that would be an example of a revised motion. But is that something that we want to revise numbers? Or do we want to revert it back to the way it has been? And, which means we just don't even make changes at all, and we just leave the middle school at 12%?
We cannot move, we can't leave that middle school at 12%.
I think it has to...
I'm confused here. I'm confused. I don't understand what the issue is.
If we up it, then they're going to get more of an advantage over here, right?
And they'll get another half position.
That's what I'm saying.
So I don't understand what the issue is.
Well, because if we, if they keep it at...
Can you go back to the, to the previous?
Why would it take Tim to get another position at Oaken County Home? What percentage are we raising?
To get a full percentage? I'd have to go run those numbers. You know, and I'm glad to do that. But I will tell you, just so you know, because I'm working with these principals on their budgets, I met with the principal there, a brand-new principal, met with her. She has a plan to pay for the other half of a full position. If you all make this change, she has a plan to cover the other half of that cost with other pieces of her budget.
Do you all understand what we're trying to do?
I don't, because I don't understand. Because I'm thinking, we're putting resources into the schools by increasing this. I don't understand what, is it because they then can take those dollars, and instead of applying them to the other half of a teacher, then they can buy Chromebooks with it?
I don't want them buying Chromebooks.
I know, but is that what the concern is?
I know, I can't say that, because they can do what they want.
Is that what the concern is?
My concern is a body, is a body.
So this gives an additional half of a body to both of the middle school-specific schools, Bloomfield and Oaken County.
But they can take this, they can convert it to dollars, and then they can take those dollars, and they can buy whatever they want with, that they want, is that what's...
Regardless of what they want.
I have not talked to Mr. Morgeson, but I can tell you that the plan at Oaken County Home is to, is to hire a half person.
What I, I think what I hear you saying is, you would rather it be a full additional person. The thing that I will say, and of course, you know, it's as a whole body that, you know, we make the decision on this, is we then start singling out very specific schools. So then, what will prevent Nelson County High School from saying, well, we don't want 15% because that just gives us a half?
Well...
So what's wrong with that?
What's the need? I'm going by the need over there. I'm not going by what one of them wants equal to, because nothing's ever going to be equal. I mean, we're just saying, between the teachers not being equal, just because you've got this, doesn't mean you're comparing apples to apples. We're never going to be able to do that. I'm just saying, as a need arises, if they need the whole, then they should get the whole. And Robin would know exactly what they need.
And again, she, I have met with her a number of times, since she's been taking that job. And her plan with this, she's excited about this change. I will tell you, I'm speaking for her, I know. But I can tell you, she's excited about this change. And we met yesterday. She has a plan. She thought she, she wanted just the half, that was her plan. And she now wants to make it a whole position, but has figured out a way to fund the whole position with, if you approve this. She has a plan. We worked together on it yesterday to cover that entire position.
But if she takes that to her site base, okay, and the site base says, no, 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 we don't want to do that, we want to do this with it. I mean, can they essentially, can they trump her?
They can. They can. But they would be able to do that if you made it a whole position.
Yeah.
So...
You give them three positions, and they can go out and buy something completely different.
Okay, how about if we say, if you need it, let's say, Ms. Hanlon, if you need it, we can provide it. Would she, you know what I mean?
I have, okay. I think, I think this might be our middle ground.
Okay. There you go. That's a compromise.
Let me, well, let's find a compromise in that if we approve this tonight, because this is getting to where we wanna be.
Yes.
Which is another body in O'Keefe Home. That's what we're hearing verbally. But we all hear stuff verbally and then we need to see the action that follows it up. And let's say in December, God forbid, we still have the problems we have there. And we find out that this half a position was just that, it was a half, it turned into a half position and it was not used for, it was for Chromebooks, let's just say. Nothing against Chromebooks, but whatever. It wasn't what we think it's gonna be now. In December, at another meeting, can this come up again or is this one of these, okay? So this is not something that we can do now so the teachers can get their budgets, everybody can get their stuff lined up for August now, but we know, sitting here, that if it does, if things don't start turning into rainbows and unicorns over there, we can come in and say, "Wait a minute, we're gonna have to do a different allocation. They need more people or they need something different."
And we'll be bringing the eighteen, nineteen formula to you in January anyway. We're gonna be doing that in January.
Right. So we're gonna know, we're gonna know, we're gonna try this one out that is a three percent increase for the middle school, which gets O'Keefe Home a half a person. They have a plan to get the other whole person. So this three percent does it without breaking our bank.
That's correct.
Okay. And if it's not enough, we can come back later.
It's the SBDM that, that legal right that they do have to say, "Here's how we're going to leverage that person, that half a person or, or it". And, um, again, reflecting back, I, I remember that Ms. Beaver would bring to the SBDM, "But we've got an extra half a person that Hawkins Smith has given us. We've got this other funding over here at Title I that we're gonna add into that". And at that time, I think it was forty-one thousand. You said it's, what, fifty thousand, this average teacher? And so you know that you have to have fifty thousand for the teacher. Well, if I've got twenty-five thousand out of this additional allocation, I've also got, sounds like what Robin is doing, thinking over there at OGH, I've got this other twenty-five here I'll add to another, and I've got a full teaching position.
That, she has a plan to do that.
Okay. But I don't want her to think there's no help.
I don't think she thinks that.
But you know what I mean? We all know what I mean. I don't want it to be stretched to the point where something else is valuable for that school and they're not gonna get it.
So Rebecca has, you know, the, I mean, she, she has it right there where she said, you know, "At the end of the year, let's do a review. Let's look at it. Let's, you know, report back, you know, from those principals, say, hey, you know, how did this work? Kind of a thing. What did you, what did your site base do with it? And then, then we'll know for the eighteen, nineteen year what we will and won't do and-
I mean, I think right now we're going in, in, we're going in short periods of time. So-
Yep.
I'm good with that.
Okay. All right. So then, let's go back.
And if I remember right, too, if the actual person hired is more than that half-position allocation, that doesn't have a negative impact on that school because you end up having to figure out how to pick up that extra money.
We use the average salary. We don't penalize any school for the person they hire. We wanna hire the best person for the job. Uh, if that person's got thirty years' experience and a rank one, or if they're right out of college.
Yeah.
As far as their budget's concerned, it doesn't need-
Yeah. I wouldn't make sure to bring that one up because it could be someone that costs sixty thousand dollars a year on the salary schedule.
I hope it is.
But it's only going to be that amount of money, the average salary, out of it. And Hawkins Smith figures out how to make the rest of it happen.
Okay. So are we good?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So then, we need a motion to pass, um, the revision of the staffing formula as it's written.
Motion.
So Damon has made a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Rebecca's second. All in favor. Any opposed? Motion passes. There you go.
Good job.
That was a little bit more painful. All right. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is our College and Career Readiness, and we have Mr. Justin Morgan with our data security presentation.
Welcome to the party, Mr. Morgan.
I feel like I have to say something about Dave Cocke. You guys are used to seeing Dave and he retired, so we-
As if we couldn't fail on a lot of things.
It was, it was very strange this week without Dave. He's, he's missed.
At least you're not wearing Indiana red.
I'm not wearing Indiana red, for sure. Um, so, uh, you can go on to the next side, Carla. This is, uh, one of the reasons we're here. Um, this regulation requires that we, um, acknowledge through the board that we have reviewed best practices for data security throughout the history, um, for student data, staff data, any of the data that we, we touch. You can go on through, Carla. So here are some of the current relevant legislation. Um, I can go into a little bit of detail on each one of those if you want. COPA is, you know, anyone under thirteen, you have to have parent's permission if you're doing online services with them. And I'm gonna paraphrase these, you know, stay away from the legal jargon, but, um, SIPA is, um, we get federal money from E-Rate from government for the internet connection. And SIPA says that we have to try to protect students when they're on the internet, try to keep them from sites that shouldn't get to, things of that nature. Um, our web filter is SIPA compliant. Um, you've got some state legislation. We're going to go into a little bit of detail on HB two thirty-two and HB five. Um, go ahead, Carla. These are the relevant work policies and procedures. Um, and there's really not a lot to say about those. So House Bill two thirty-two. Um, this is, um, it puts some protections on, around how we can use student data in the cloud. Um, we have a lot of services. And then the cloud is meaning we don't have servers down here that that data is sitting on. So it's sitting at a vendor's data center somewhere, usually in the United States, doesn't have to be. But, um, it puts protections around, um- Yes, they can.
Yep. So the, the whisper was so they can store in different countries. For instance, the email system that all public schools in Kentucky uses has multiple redundant data centers. I think one of them is, uh, maybe, um, but also San Antonio, Texas is another location that's at some-
And that doesn't make it any, any less secure. I mean, if it were sitting here, if it were sitting in the Ukraine, or if it were sitting, I mean, the internet is the internet. So you can get, you know, you can get around anywhere. So, you know, a hack, you know, say there's somebody bad in another country, just because the data's over there doesn't mean they couldn't get to it if it were over there. It's, yes, it's, it's, it's all connected. So, um, it also defines, uh, what student data actually is, and we'll, we'll go over that here in just a second. So I'm not going to, uh, to read that to you guys, but here in a second, I'm going to show you what, um, PII is, personally identifiable information. So it actually breaks down what pieces of information you have to have to actually be personally identifiable information. So we have some different rules around different types of data, things like that. You'll see that here on the next couple of slides. So House Bill five, um, actually defines what it was just saying there, defines personal information. Um, and it also has some recommendations, or actually laws, on how to notify that there was a breach. So if we get a breach, uh, breach is defined as a loss of information. It could be, um, someone even, someone accidentally emailed a file to the wrong people that had PII in it, something like that. That would be considered a breach. Um, it's very well-defined as far as how you have to handle that in, in these laws. So we have so many hours that we have to notify these agencies. And then we have so many days after that to notify the people involved, things of that nature. Um, we're gonna get into a little more detail as we go here. So here is, here's information, um, on what actually PII is. So you can see first name or first initial and last name, uh, or we got a personal mark, a unique biometric print image, you know, you're getting into fingerprints, you're getting into retina stuff and, and things like, even facial recognition. They're saying the new iPhone's gonna have facial recognition and stuff like that. Um, so that's where the biometric comes in. And that has to be coupled with one of the things on the right there. Um, so that is, uh, you can see there, you basically, a way to boil that down is you, it has to be information that someone could do harm with. You know, if you've got someone's name and their social security number, you might be able to do something with that. Um, but if you've just got someone's first name, you're, you're not gonna do anything with that. So that's a good way to boil that down as far as what is PII.
Or, or I would say even if, as scary as it sounds, even if someone has a social security number, if they don't know a name that attacked us too bad, it'd be a challenge to open up a credit card or-
Yep. Yep. So these are data breach incidents by type. This is a little dated, um, but it, it holds true as far as the big red line. Everybody's eyes go to the big red line right off the bat. So that is hacking, skimming, phishing. Um, phishing is a, a very big deal, uh, these days. So we have started last year, we're gonna actually maybe try to switch to a different vendor this year, but we started phishing our own employees last year. Uh, you guys were getting those emails as well. Um, so what that means is, we signed up for a service and we can-
Did we pass the test?
What's that?
Did we pass the test?
I'm not going, you can talk to me individually. But, uh, so the first fish we sent out, we sent out an email blast that looked like it came from Facebook. Now, let me, let me back up. We trained everybody first. We sent out training. You know, we sent out the little tips. We had training videos. We, "Hey, think before you click. Hover over the link so you can see what, what you're clicking on before you click. Look at the from address". So our first fish was just a baseline test. Um, and that, that was actually before the training. We went to see what we reacted before we told anybody anything. And it was a Facebook email. And it said, "Hey, somebody's tagged the photo of you on Facebook". And twenty percent of staff clicked on that link. Um, so if you were at home and you clicked that, and there were plenty of things in the email that if you had, if you were taking your time, you would've seen that, you know, "Oh, I, I should've known that wasn't from Facebook". Um, if you're at home and you got admin rights on your machine and you click on that link, you're either infected or someone is owning your computer or they can, they can watch, not trying to scare anybody, but they watch your webcam, you know, if they, if that's what they decide to do.
Being bored at my house.
I was gonna say.
Not to-
That's a boring one.
Yeah. Not to get too hung up on that, but at the end of the year, we sent out the exact same email. So throughout the year, a big one was during Christmas, we sent, "There's a problem delivering your Amazon package".
I thought, that's when I had emailed you and said, "Anthony, I got this strange email. I don't have, why did they, oh, what?"
You passed, you passed the test, yes.
I passed the test.
So that was a big one. We had a lot of people, we had a lot of people fail that one. So we followed that up with a, with a UPS. So we told everybody, like, "Hey, this was us. You know, we sent out an email to everybody that failed. We're like, gotta pay attention". And everybody's like, "That's not fair. It's Christmas time and that's when they'll get you". So we sent out another email that was UPS delivery failed. We had a significant number of people click that. So then people started to catch on, you know, like, "Okay, I shouldn't, I shouldn't click on these".
Do anything else, too.
The, at the end of the year, we did the exact same Facebook test and, uh, it had dropped to nine percent. So from twenty to nine, that's, that's, that's pretty good.
It's good.
Yep, that's pretty good. So, um, for your own personal safety, pay attention in emails, for sure. I mean, that's, that's how, that's how they, that's how they get you, for sure. All right?
Well, then they got those, what is it, that ransomware that's-
Yeah. There's been two worldwide outbreaks of that in the last month. And, uh, they're using tools stolen from the NSA. So it's not really a fair fight. So I just spoke about one of the measures that we're trying to, to do to prevent a breach. Um, we're, again, we're switching vendors, so we don't have a vendor for that right now. But, um, these are some of the things that we do. Um, any questions on those?
Let me, uh, the antivirus, malware and all that stuff.
Yep.
If we're plugged in through school, is that, um, is that-
If you're on a school device, you are-
No, I am on my personal one with going through school email. No.
It's a different thing.
Oh, really?
Yeah. You, if it's your own home computer, you need to make sure that you have your home computer protected regardless of whether you're using school email. School email's just a tool that you're using. But the computer is what is yours and you've gotta make sure it's protected.
Okay. I, I, mine is. I mean, you know, loading on that stuff.
Okay. Okay. We can move on. So, uh, the Data Security and Breach Notification Best Practice Guide, um, this is actually a, a good, a good thing that we go through this process because I actually spent a lot of time today reading over this. And, I mean, it's a great, it's a great refresher. So, um, KDE, CATS has done a great job putting these things together for us. Um, has a lot of good recommendations in there. Um, we can't do all of them. You know, you kinda have to walk a, walk a fine line with cost versus security, trying to make sure you're doing, doing the right things. But, uh, KDE does a good job with that stuff. I think we've got one or two more. Oh, no, that's it.
So, so this is where I'll ask a question. Carla, would you go back? It's two or three there. So whenever I look at that, and of course, I mean, since you're presenting this, it makes us think technology. But if we look back at the, um, House Bill five and two thirty-two that talks about, uh, PII, and this, that's the perfect page there. Thank you. Personally identifiable information. It's not necessarily out in the cloud, or it's not necessarily in an electronic file. And I saw Ms. Dow over there shaking her head and grinning up. I mean, the, what are things that we're doing? And it may not be a question that you can answer since, I mean, you're from the technology perspective, but what about that printed-out set of papers that has the first name, the social security number, the mark, whatever on it?
Date of birth.
Yeah.
Which, that's not included in this list like it is in PHI. But same difference, you get a date of birth mixed in there.
Yep. And then, I mean, fax machines.
Really?
A lot of people are like, "Oh, fax machines are secure. Send it to me". But then there's no one in the room, you know, there's like ten people walking by, you know?
Yeah. So do, do you, um, uh, kinda coach the staff on, um, like, if they have to send that type of information, that they're protecting their documents and how to password, protect them and-
So that will be me going forward, but Dave has done that historically. Um, I ran across something on the web, on the KDE website when I looked at this guide, that was some guidance on, uh, SSIDs for students. And I sent that to Renee. We had the RIC person, because we had been having a conversation about when you could really send those and when you couldn't, and it explained it perfectly.
Yeah. And the SSID, it's that student identifier number. If you wanna think of it, sorta like a social security number, but identifies that student in Infinite Campus in the, the grade book, the grade software. Um, yeah, to me, the one thing I think we've all got to keep in mind about this, really, two things always jump out to me on this topic. One, it's not just the electronic piece. It is the paper piece. Um, because if, if we backtrack forty years to before, you know, the proliferation of technology in our schools, there was that one room in the central office, there was a locked door that had all the student records in it. Those rooms still exist. And so those are things that we still have to make sure that we're conscious of. It's not just an email or a file server or something in the cloud in Ireland or wherever it might be. Um, the other piece, and I, there was an interesting, that graph there with the red line that draws our attention to it. It's phishing and it's hacking. And, um, the Department of Ed has a person that is the chief security officer, who's actually one of the main architects of that data best practices document.
He's awesome.
Yeah. Bob Hackworth. Um, and his phrase he uses, uh, and he has shared before, is "It's easier to hack a person than a computer". So that email about the Amazon package, it's a whole lot easier to try and convince you to click on that and then enter in your Amazon credentials. "Oh, and by the way, I need your credit card number as well to make sure that we've got that package being shipped correctly. And then I've got the info". It's easier for me to do that to you, hack a person, than it is to act- than it is to actually try and put a piece of spyware or malware on your computer and try and get it that way.
Really?
I mean, it's just like the IRS phone call. Oh, you owe taxes. You can pay that over the phone.
You know they're not calling anybody. They don't answer the phone and they're not calling you.
There's some interesting videos on YouTube. That's called phishing. When you use a voice to do it. And I watched the live demo of someone getting, the guy's sitting right there and they reset his mobile account, add a line, lock him out of his account. They were playing baby sounds in the background. And like, oh, I'm not on the account. Oh, hang on, I got the baby crying. And then the person on the line felt sorry for him. So they added the account, changed the password.
I got one call me, I got this about a month ago. Said that if I didn't call them back with something, that I would be arrested.
Yes.
So I was waiting for the cops to show up.
Sheriff's sitting at your door. I do want to ask you something. You brought them on. I'm right here. You know, in the record room in these schools, is there a way you can put their permit record card in something to feed it into the cloud?
There are. There are document management companies that do that. Rico's one. It's not cheap, but when they do that, they can make it electronically searchable. We've had some discussions around that for our records company, for our records room, but-
Well, I just know when you, when we used to go into the record room, and you've got a school sitting there from 1969, 1970 on. And every year, we were finding it really hard to put those. That current year went in because the whole room was filled. And it's just, it became really a pain.
Especially when you have-
It's got to be now.
Space issues in the building and you could use that room for-
Yes.
Well, they have to do scanning and archiving, kind of a, you know, software locally.
Yeah, but it would take- I'm thinking of the machine that you put in. You know, you put the card in or you put the whole sheet in and it comes out and it's automatically in the cloud somewhere. And all that to just go in there and get it. That would be neat if we could do that.
KDLA, the Kentucky Division Librarian Archives, which archives all state government documents, got to the point where they were running out of space themselves to store the physical documents. And I think at one time, like at the Department of Education, there were, just out of the Commissioner's office, 20 of those legal boxes of just pieces of paper. And that piece of paper may have just been a single email. And they couldn't take boxes anymore. So they even started looking into a little bit of what you're talking about.
It's too bad we can't because those rooms could be used for something. I know it.
It is, yeah.
But the rooms could be used for something else other than storing.
It's time consuming too. I mean, having the staff to do all the scanning or you outsource it and pay someone to stand there and scan it.
I might do it for free. You just go ahead.
Are they, so are they in fireproof storage cabinets?
The records in this building are not in fireproof.
What happens if there's a fire?
I don't know.
But they're compliant with records in retention. We talk through that on an occasional basis. We don't talk about that every month. But that's something that we have gone through to make sure that we're compliant with those expectations.
And the reason why I brought that up, because again, with Jesse being the tech person, we think of it as technology. It doesn't matter whether it's on a floppy drive in the cloud or wherever, on a piece of paper. Those things still have to fly through that we have to be conscious of.
You drop this folder in the parking lot.
Yeah.
See, that's what I, yeah. Yeah, that's what I think of. Breaking your car when you've got a, let's say you've got a student record there. They've got your social security because everybody has to have one now at birth. And you've got all that information. And before you know it, your kid's information's gone. So they're out there doing their thing. Just something to think about.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah. That was a good presentation. Next up is the 2017 ACT content composite scores with Ms. Brown.
So the blue line is the district score. The red line is the state score. You will see the composite ACT for our district as a whole from 2011 to 2016-17. This test was administered in March. And we have a 20.1. The state average is 19.8. So we held exactly the same score that we had last year for this, in 2015-16 for 16-17.
So that's our juniors, right? 16-17? So that was this past April or whatever month?
March, the end of March. Carla, if we go to the next. You see 2011-12 across at the top and then 2016-17 across at the bottom. And in each column, you see the individual composite scores for the content. So in English, from 15-16, the district, we had a 20. In 15-16, this year, we have a 19.4. If you look across at the neighbor there beside the 16-17 score, we are higher than the state average in English. In mathematics, in 15-16, we had 19.2. In 16-17, we came up to 19.7. And if you look at the neighbor again, we have done better than the state at 19.4. In reading, in 15-16, we had 20.2. 16-17, we came up to 20.4. And again, if you look at the neighbor, we beat the state in reading. In science, we had just a tad drop from 20.4 to 20.3. But if you look at the neighbor, we again were better than the state average. And then our composite at 20.1, the state came up a little bit, but we still beat them with our 20.1 to their 19.8. I am very pleased with these scores. As you can see, over time, we have been ahead of the state across the board. Our teachers are working hard. Our students are working hard. I will tell you that as we have added two new principals in particular, that we have been looking at everything across the board. We have designed some programs to meet the need of a core instructional problem that we see. And what that is, is that kids need more time in class and more time focused with their teachers. So at the high schools, we have done a little bit of rearranging the schedule in the mornings. Students will go in to meet their advocate or their mentor for 15 minutes, 14 to 15 minutes. Then they will go straight to first period and begin school. At Old Kentucky Home, we have looked at the schedule across the board and we did have a core instructional problem there. So we have added, from around 42 minutes now, students will be in class 61 minutes. At both high schools and Old Kentucky Home Middle School, we found that we think we had too much passing time with five to six minutes to pass between classes. So we have cut that to four minutes. And we're going to see how that works beginning this school year. But we have a greater focus on the core instructional time with teacher to student ratio and teacher to student content. Your addition that you did tonight to help both middle schools, thank you for that because that will help address that core instructional problem that we have through our programs and our schedule to meet the needs of the students and to raise these scores.
Nice work.
So media reps, please, please, can you report, you know, this? So that we could see some good in the newspaper, you know, and online? That there are some good things that are going on in our school district and this is reflective of that.
I find it very interesting, the mathematics and going up a half a point. Because that's usually one of the areas that, not just here, but just in general, it seems like high schools always lag behind. That there's not those increases.
We focus very hard on that and they've worked very hard. They've put a lot of work in during their PLCs to focus on that math instruction. We're not where we need to be yet. I'm not going to sit here and tell you that. But we are, we have laid the foundation and we're starting to build. And I think it will get better. We do have, I will tell you this, math teachers and science teachers are hard to find. And so we're looking everywhere we can look to ensure that we have quality staff in place in all openings, but particularly in math and science.
Do, I don't remember off the top of my head, in the four, those four core areas, what are the college ready benchmark numbers?
I looked at those, Mr. Jackie, right before I came in. And I hope that Dr. Orr can, he's not, he's-
Dr. Orr uses Google.
Yeah. I would, I will get those.
Okay, that's fine.
I don't have them right here. I did some things, thinking, anticipating what you might ask me, but that wasn't one of them.
Well, because, I mean, regardless, I mean, 20.1 is good. I agree with you there. Of course, one of the other things, whether we're talking about college or career readiness, is, so we were having some great successes with the career readiness pieces. A big part of that is some of what you're doing, what Ms. Godey's doing, yeah. But also, I'm curious how we're still trying to hit those spots on the college. For those that are deciding, I don't want to take a remedial, or can't afford to take a remedial course once I get to college.
We have fewer remedial courses going on right now than we had since I've been in the district. We do try to ensure through various testing mechanisms, I'm sorry, COADI and some other testing pieces that we, thank you, Rob, that we get those. English is 18, math is 19, and reading is 20. I'm wanting to think that maybe they might be a little bit higher than that, but 18, 19, 20 for English, 18, math, 19, and reading is 20.
I knew they were in the war room. And they were numerically important apart. I just couldn't remember where.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we are taking them, if they don't meet the benchmark on the ACT, we are working with them while we still have them as seniors. And then we take them over to ECTC and test them. And in some cases, we can do other testing to get them to college benchmark before they leave us.
And these are averages, not means, correct?
Exactly.
But it's good news. It's good news to pass the board.
We were, I was thrilled when we held our own. We did okay.
Taking big brands.
Do we have any 32s this time around? Isn't that the top score 32?
36.
36 at the top. Oh, we have, we have, no, we don't have 36, but we have some in the 30s.
Some in the 30s, good.
And lots from 25 to 30.
Oh, really?
We have several.
Great.
That's good news.
Great.
We've got good news all over the place.
The summer school, that's- Yeah, so let me show you what's going on. So summer school has been something that I think is very important because it just helps kids and it ensures that they are able to function well during the regular school year. So the first year I was here, we had six students that came to summer school for one week. And so this is year three. So this year, we have three sessions. We had session one, May 30th through June 9th. We have a morning session from 8:30 to 11:30 and an afternoon from 12:30 to 3:30. We have employed a special education teacher, a mathematics teacher. A total student attendance of 32 for the two weeks, the nine days. We didn't go Memorial Day. And then an average daily attendance of 23 per day. So we've come from six to 23 per day. Carla, if you'll go on to session two, took place June 19th through 30th. Again, the two sessions per day. The same people were employed. The total student attendance was 38 for the session and an average daily attendance of 23 per day. In one of our town hall meetings, we had one of our math teachers that asked the question, if middle school kids can go. If principals will call me and we will make special arrangements for students who might have some deficits, but they can go on to high school, but the family or the school just feels they need a little bit of extra help. Then we do allow eighth graders to go to summer school. So this year, we've had three eighth grade students that were required to attend summer school in order to move on to high school coursework in 2017-18. And they are coming. They have been there every day. The great news is we still have one more session to go. Starting Monday, we will go from July 10th through the following Friday for two weeks. But as of today, we have recovered 84 half credits and 42 full credits in four weeks. And this is phenomenal. We have never done this in an entire summer, much less in two sessions. So the kids are there, they're focused, their parents are focused. They provide their own transportation. We feed them breakfast, we feed them lunch. And then they can come in two sessions or they can stay all day. Whatever they want to do, it's up to them and their parents. That some of the students do pay for their coursework. Other students do not because of free reduced lunch prices and that kind of thing. But I've had several parents to call and self nominate their students and ensure that they get them here. So it's working out very well. Our two teachers, you see that I've targeted math. So that's why we have a math teacher there is because I feel we have a core instructional problem in middle and high school that we need to boost our math. And so we have that dedicated math teacher there. And then the special educator is there for any students who have disabilities or so that we can meet their needs. But the staff is working very hard. Mr. Rouse has been a great addition to provide the structure that we need for all programs. So everything is looking really well. I'll bring you an update after we do session three so that you can see what we did for the whole summer.
Do you have any prediction on possible number of students for session three? I mean, do they have to sign up far enough in advance?
Yes, there are around 21 that have registered for the third session, July 10th to 21st. Well, there's 21.
Yeah, if I just would have waited, yeah.
Yeah, there's one more that has since I did this slide. And then if they hear of this or they call me, they can register on the first day. But right now, at the time of this slide, we had 20 and we've had one more to register. So approximately 21, but it could be more than that.
Did we have any students that were in both first and second session?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. And will be in the third session. And we will have a graduation. The last time I talked to Mr. Rouse, we had five students who have finished their graduation or their requirements for graduation. And we will have a graduation ceremony. So we'll let you all know when we do that. It will probably be on July 21st. But we do have that for them then. And then they can come back and walk with their class or they can walk with the spring graduation. It may be the class behind them, but they'll have their own graduation experience.
Now, Ms. Brown, what is the gap? I mean, what is the score gap? Like 65 to 70 or 60 to 70?
Anything below 60 is an F. Is that what you're asking?
Yes, yes.
60 to 70 is a D. Or 60 to 69 is a D, 70, 79, C. You changed that about a year ago.
Yes.
We adjusted that.
So how many kids, I mean, what is the requirement to?
How many credits do they need to graduate?
No, no, I know that one. What is the point, the gap that they're reaching for? I mean, like, are you taking people, kids that's got a 45 average or a 50 average?
Anybody who has failed.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
They have failed the coursework.
Okay, so there's no particular, okay, that's what I'm wondering.
No, if they fail the coursework, they have to have it to graduate. So if they fail Algebra I, then they retake Algebra I. If they fail Algebra I second semester, then they retake Algebra I second semester. So it's divided, that's why you see half credits? credits.
Yes.
That's what that means.
Okay.
They've gotten those half credits. So, we've had several students. It's pretty neat to look at the attendance, because they'll be, there'll be access to show that they were there, and then you'll have finished, and it just gets like, all right, because they'll get right in the middle and finish, and then they can go, you know, they're finished. They recovered everything they need. I've had parents to call and say, my freshman passed two courses. You know, what are we going to do? And I, well, we're going to go to summer school, and we're going to get the rest of the courses passed, and they're going to be wanting to be a sophomore. So, the parents get on board with that, and, you know, if we provide that, they are taking us up on the offer. So, it's good.
So, that way, then, we're keeping them on track to be a four-year student versus a four-and-a-half or five.
Exactly.
Do we have any students that are doing this to get ahead?
No.
Okay. This is just for students that fail their cores?
Now, okay, now, wait a minute. Yes, yes, summer school, yes, to the answer to that. Do I have students who are doing things to get ahead? Yes.
Which is the salary conversation.
We have early graduation, where they stay in their high school, and they do the coursework more quickly. And then, we also have some students who know, or think they do, that they don't want to go to college, and they want to get out of school early. And so, we have had a student or two in the past who have been enrolled in Horizons, and they have taken coursework quickly. But no, we don't have anybody in summer school right now.
I was thinking that summer school is specific for students that are needing to recover for a class that they have failed, that we're not also allowing students who say, hey, I'd like to go on and get ahead, to use summer school to do it?
Right. We don't have that right now, but you will have that, I hope, by Christmas. I'm going to bring to you an accelerated program with an associate's degree in science and arts. I'm going to do two of those, but I don't have it ready for you yet. But yes, we will have acceleration.
I guess what I'm thinking is, the student that virtually didn't do a whole lot during the school year, and then they figured, aha, we can go to summer school, and we can pass. That's my thing.
But uh-uh, they can't.
Okay, because I'm thinking of the kid that's done what they're supposed to do, the work that we're supposed to do, and you've got Henry over here that didn't do anything, or, or lack of the word, okay? And then they're going, oh, Henry's mother's going, oh, dear, but you can go to summer school and pass with a D or whatever.
Not unless they do the coursework. They can do coursework, like assignments at home, and they can do that without the assistance of the teacher, if they know what they're doing. They can take a quiz at home, but their major tests, they have to take there, and there is no interaction with the internet or any person. So, if they fail the test, then they go back and have to redo the whole unit until they can test out of that content, and then they can move forward. So, it's not easier than their classroom.
Okay. I hate to say, you know what I'm talking about, but you do know what I'm talking about.
Well, and I think, I think over time, when she mentioned earlier that Mr. Rouse has done a good job of adding structure to the program this summer, that that's the kind of, I think where you're going is the kind of thing that maybe, whether urban legend or true reality, people will say, well, you don't have to, you can, you can skip out to Google and find the answers, and then come back. I think that kind of structure is in place in that summer school program, that that kind of, that's locked down. Is that fair statement?
And they don't have phones. So, those ones. Those two things have changed. Dr. Orr is correct. Google was prevalent, and they could go out to the internet, and they could look up answers and do some things that way, but we have locked it down now to where it has to be what they've learned, and they have to know what they're, what they're doing on the tests and the quizzes in order to pass. So, yes, we have much more structure.
Okay, because those hours, it's just like, instead of forty minutes, they're in there the whole time. Instead of walking to a classroom, you're there, what, forty-eight, fifty-two, or whatever you're in a classroom for, according how many, how long your day, I mean, how long your class periods are. But they're there strictly for, let's say, a teacher, a math teacher. They're, students there the whole day for math only.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's, I can live with that. Yeah, you know what I mean. I just don't want people to get the idea that you go to summer school and make a whole, because you didn't do anything during the semester, that you can make all that up and then go, oh, yeah, I learned math. Because, you know, and other Lulu over here went every day to school, made the grades, and did the work.
Do we have many repeat children from year to year? That's kind of goes on her inquiry.
Repeat summer school?
Yeah, you know, the, like, they come in as freshmen and went to summer school, then sophomore, they come in and done summer school.
Yes, if they go to a course, they have to.
I mean, that's good. Keep them in check and keep them pushing. That's good.
Okay. Good job.
All right, then next up is instructional fees.
My partner.
Your partner's coming.
Partner, now.
Your partner's coming.
So, instructional fees, we bring to you every year, so that you can be able to answer questions from the community. This is our fees for seventeen, eighteen. Here you have the middle schools. They require a student agenda, and then some other supplies. The cost of each of their needs is between thirty-five and sixty-five dollars for each of our middle schools, which I think is pretty reasonable for middle school, especially with that student agenda piece. So, Old Kentucky Home has a little bit higher, thirty-eight to sixty-five, but I guess that's the particular agenda that they're looking at, maybe a little bit more expensive there. If we move on to our high schools, last year, when I brought you this information, this slide was filled. And so, you asked me to get the schools now in line with each other, and to equal out the costs. So, the reason that you see those big spaces, those are fees that are gone. So, the concert band supplies is, the price is now fifty dollars. It was a hundred. So, it's been cut by fifty percent. Instructional fees, supplies, twenty dollars. It's the same. Marching band, the supplies that they need, it had been three hundred dollars, and they cut that by one hundred. And then, parking is five dollars, and that's the same as it was last year. But again, those large spaces that you see are fees that were completely taken away. So, if you look at Thomas Nelson, you have a technology fee at forty dollars and a parking permit at ten. Their band program is still in the developmental stages. So, I predict that as that program grows, you will see their concert band fees, and their marching band fee, and possibly even drama, now that they have an auditorium, some other fees that could be added to this. But at this time, I think we have them pretty much equaled out, as per your request.
Why is their parking permit different?
I'm not sure. They, they just charge five dollars more than Nelson Kennedy. Do you want that one fixed?
Okay, well, you know.
I can work on that.
Work on that one too.
Okay, I can work on that.
Okay, for elementary, and this also includes a couple of the middle schools, OKH joined us this year, and Bloomfield Middle School. We did individualize the school list. Last year, we had district lists, and a couple of the schools wanted to individualize those lists. They didn't feel the need for certain supplies, so we did allow them to individualize those lists. There were teacher input. We streamlined for quality and need. We really looked for that. We did provide online ordering, and we started that in March. If you remember, last year, we didn't start the online ordering until May, because we didn't set up that contract until May with the company. So, we started it in March, when we opened kindergarten registration. So, we've been advertising. We did close the window on June the fifteenth, just so we would get the supplies here by the back-to-school picnic time. Mail-in availability was provided for those people that didn't want to order online, so they could drop it off at the school, or they could mail it here to the central office. If you go to the next slide, I think we have a number count. A grade level kit sets were created according to the list. Each school had a specific code. The kits were created and packaged. They'll be delivered to each school. The names will be placed and labeled, so like, they're shrink-wrapped with the names on there. It's very cost-effective. It's about a forty percent cut. If you remember, last year, I got a call from Walmart here locally because of the price difference. But like I said, it is a cost savings to the parents. The order forms were available to those who did not want to order online. We did advertise by Facebook and on the school websites. The sale was from March 23rd to June 15th, and I think I have the total number, Carla. There were two-hundred-and-thirty-eight kids sold to date. Like I said, all elementary and middle schools participated, and they should all arrive to the schools by their back-to-school picnic. I think July 28th is actually the delivery date.
As a parent, I would tell you, I absolutely love it. I embrace it. I did it last year. I did it again this year. It is the easiest thing you'll ever do. And a forty percent discount, then you're not like me, because when I go in there, you know, my kid doesn't, she wants, I mean, they want, and you just end up getting all kinds of crazy stuff that she doesn't really need, it's not on the list, just to get out of the store. I mean, it probably saved me a hundred percent. I mean, I love them. I loved it. I mean, they were great, delivered right to the school. You'd have to pack those Walmart bags anywhere, or Target, or wherever, not the same with Walmart. But yeah, thank you. I appreciate the service as a parent. I hope other people do too. I think it's wonderful.
Good.
And we ordered just a few extras. So, each school at the back-to-school picnic, because I've already received a few calls, the parents missed the cutoff, and we didn't order as many as we did last year. I think we ordered ten kits extra. I think there's five at every school, and we ordered at multiple grade levels, mostly at kindergarten, because that's usually the parents that want those. But at the back-to-school picnics, they can sell them that night. So, like I said, it was meant to provide some customer service to our parents. I know, as a parent of four, I love it. So, I took full advantage of it.
Yeah, the only thing, the only thing I would suggest would be, if there was a way to, you know, if you wanted to add on, like, if I budgeted a hundred dollars for school supplies, and that was fifty, and I felt like, well, I always want to give the fifty dollars to the teacher, spend on what she needed. If there was a way to do that online with that, and then that would be great, if it didn't cost anybody, you know what I'm saying? So that the people that do want to round up their forty-two dollars to fifty, or whatever it was.
That's a good idea.
Put a gift to the-
What's awesome.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, I ordered, I just ordered two kits, and put one of my kid's name and one of her teacher's name. Because, I mean, it was that much worth it to me, and I knew not everybody would have them. So, fine, there you go. But most people, I think people wouldn't think to do that. But yeah, I mean, ask, do you want to round up, do you want to round up whatever, say it was forty-seven dollars, do you want to round up to fifty, and the three dollars goes to-
To the classroom.
Whatever.
Yeah, I like that.
Well, I could ask.
If you can ask them if they could do that for us next year, I think that'd be great. I mean, even if you get ten dollars, ten dollars, you can have a form.
Yes, and I did have a couple of parents actually contact me and ask if they could purchase for another student in the class, and you can do that. And so, they ordered like two kits, and I just said that you can just hand that back to the teacher in that classroom when they-
It'll let you put anybody's name on there that you wanted.
Yes.
But do you have to have a name, or can you just say donate, or whatever?
Well, you probably can't if you're better computer than I am, or you have more, I was in Harvard.
No, not.
I was in Harvard, so I thought convenient, I was in the faculty handle, Riley and Nixon.
Just put Lulu on.
Right.
Put Lulu, and they'll get it.
Okay.
Lulu gets everything.
You feel free to order everything. Has names in the classes, you'll be fine.
I'll do that next year. Remind me.
All right, next up is our safety and caring environment, our preschool program approval.
Okay, this is the approval that will be coming to you at the next board meeting. And basically, this is just a summary of the overall preschool program. It is a listing of the teachers that will be on staff at the preschool. It shares a little bit about their education experience, the instructional assistants that'll be working there, the hours of operation. Just like I said, it's basically a summary of the program. And so, it just gives you an overview. You can see there that there are some vacant spots, so hopefully, by the time we get this back to you, we will have all these positions filled. So, like I said, I think the decision paper will be coming up at the next meeting.
Can I relate to this? Do we have any prediction of what, as of right now, the enrollment numbers look like with preschool?
I think Ms. Walker can probably speak to that better than I can, but right now, I think she has seven full classrooms expected.
I have seven classrooms, not going to be full, but I have forty-two for August the eleventh to be screened. And so, we were talking yesterday that opening up August tenth. I would hate to start completely full, because the way I run, literally, every single day, a kid is turning three, or people are knocking at my door, and so, we're constantly enrolling. So, if I start at capacity, I can't take anybody else. Now, I have to leave five morning and five afternoon spaces for what's called first steps. Always, I have to have room for them, because that's the disability.
Sorry already, yep.
So, there'll always be that space. But as I started putting them in classes today, and if I open tomorrow, I would have five four-year-old classes and only two threes, and that makes me nervous. So, I'm hoping to get an eighth class, while I have three threes and five fours, because it's getting wonderfully tight. I mean, I was there today, and some lady was banging on my window to get in and hand me a paper about four-thirty this afternoon to get her child enrolled, so.
So, with the expansion of the Early Learning Center, I mean, what, I mean, do you have like a rough gut number of the increase in enrollment numbers over prior year?
Well, what I can tell you is, last Christmas, we were almost a hundred more than what we had at the end of my first year here.
Which would have been spring sixteen.
We were at like one-sixty, great. And so, we were, we were about two-forty, two-forty-five when we finished this year. So, I don't have, other than my kindergartners leaving, I don't have a whole lot. I have three that have declined coming back next year for victims moved or whatever. So.
And then, next up is preschool agreement with the Central Kentucky Head Start.
And this is the group that has to come to you every year, saying that, of course, we agree to make sure that we have full utilization with Head Start, basically stating that we're going to fill their program first, which is forty-five students. As of right now, they have thirty. So, she was talking about her screening day, so hopefully, we can fill them with their four-year-olds. We have to supply them with fifteen more students before, basically, we can reach our capacity. So, that's our agreement with them. Again, that will come to you at our next meeting.
Great. All right, and then, Dr. Orr, you are up with the Head Start memorandum of agreement.
So, this is another agreement that we have with Head Start that just describes the way that we work jointly with them to provide special services to students with disabilities. One thing that you'll notice, if you look all the way through this, and I hope you will, is that you go through sections of this agreement, and then you'll see a list of addenda at the end of the packet. Head Start is actually going through a process of revising this contract, so it's a draft at this point. It'll most likely change before we bring it back, but as soon as we get the finalized version of it, we'll bring it to you. Ultimately, it's a standard contract each year that we work from, and it's, it's one of those things where they've got to be compliant with federal guidelines, and then we have to be compliant with those guidelines as well. So, it's, when I say standard, it obviously is changing a little bit this year, but it's always to be in compliance with those federal guidelines. So, we'll bring that to you, and as soon as we get a more final version of that, we'll make that available to you.
And then, Office of Vocational Rehabilitation MOA.
This one is similar in that it lays out the way that we collaborate with the Office of Vocational Rehabilitation, but this focuses specifically on our transition program. And you know that Ms. Harlow is the teacher who works with that program, and so, this relates to that and some other things as well. This related to those transitions between school levels. So, again, it's a standard agreement that we have, that we have to approve every year in order to get funding for that program.
And then, the Limited Services Contract Agreement with BCS.
This one is, I believe, the second year that we've had an agreement with Bardstown, essentially where neither school district has enough students with hearing impairments to justify full positions. So, we basically share a teacher position between the two. And so, this is just a contract that allows us, sets that out, and allows us to do that. We'll bring that back to you. This is also something that has, that we do each year, and we learned actually several years ago to keep these focused on positions, because even late in the summer, we sometimes have transitions there. So, it just identifies the positions within each school that will be 504 and ARC chairs. And so, we'll ask you to approve those positions as ARC chairs. Generally speaking, those are not, they don't always run the meeting, because we also have two ARC chair positions in the district that kind of facilitate those. But occasionally, there'll be conflicts in schedules that cause us to have to make those substitutions, and we train all of the people in those positions to cover that if we need it.
All right, and then, the Community Care Contract. I think Mr. Moore's here.
Hi, Brittany Riggs here. She's the regional director with Community Care. Asked her to come tonight if you had questions. Basically, what this, you have a copy of this contract. What it boils down to is we're going to have a PRN that's going to be available to us in the district that's going to be able to see our children, be able to see our staff members, and then it will be directly billed through them. So no cost to us. It's a win-win situation, whereas we're hoping, and Brittany, I don't know if you've got those questions yet. Mr. Hockinsmith and I met with her and had a few questions, like can they do DOT physicals for us? Have you, have you got an answer on that yet?
Haven't seen a problem with it at this point yet.
So that would be a big advantage. We, we pay to have our drivers have their DOT physicals every year or so. Having that in-house would be advantageous in sports, physicals, just quite several things like that that are really, I think, will be a big advantage to us besides having some extra nursing coverage. And we hope to expand from one this year, if it works out well, to some additional ones over the years to come.
So this is like an onsite health clinic?
Yes, ma'am.
Where's it, where's it going to be?
It's mobile, so they'll, our one, we'll cover all of the schools at this point.
Okay.
But like Mr. Moore was saying, we would look to expand as it grows, because obviously one person is going to be spread kind of thin through, through the whole family.
We're looking at mainly working out of, at the beginning, Elsie County High School in Foster Heights, because it's pretty centralized and it's got, you know, most kids in one place. And, but if the need arises, such as sports, physicals, we can have them go out to Thomas Nelson, set up a time to do sports, physicals, or code, you know, so it's not just set in one spot, but kind of just start in those bigger schools.
But then also for like the parents with the kids who need those immunization boosters and, you know, I mean, it's always kind of, you know, challenging, you know, to, you know, take off work and things like that. And so it kind of provides, again, that customer service piece, you know, to the parents to be able to get those things updated and. For that kid who gets sent to school and needs to go to the doctor's office and mom has to take off, who works 30 minutes away, and then they have to sit for an hour in the doctor's office.
How about drug tests?
We do do drug tests. Those are at cost of whomever requests it. So if a parent requests it, they're going to be charged. We charge $10 at this point in time. If school personnel requests that, then school will be at, we'll charge school for that. So then, would like the parents, if they have, you know, medical insurance, you know, whatever it is, then is it filed, then do y'all do the filing, you know, for their insurance?
We do. Now, the drug tests are separate. They're not covered under the insurance, so that's.
Right, but if, but if the immunizations and that type of, you know, and the healthcare and, you know, maybe the preventative healthcare, those types of visits with these kids, they can be filed under the student's insurance or the staff member's insurance?
Absolutely.
You all do all that and?
We have online medical records, so we do everything right there. Our billing office shoots out the invoices to the insurance companies and we take care of it that way. Now, if they do have private insurance, they'll be responsible for whatever their copay is.
Their copays, and so how does that handle onsite though? Who's handling the money?
Um, most of the time with private insurance, we bill the parent.
Okay, gotcha.
If they know that their kid is coming in and they want to come and pay that day, then that's fine as well.
So you bill copays?
But we do, yeah, we do invoice them as well.
What about prescriptions?
Those are electronic, which is wonderful, with the exception of controlled substances. Wouldn't be in the schools. Most of the psychiatric controlled substances like that are prescribed in the clinic. But yeah, for like your antibiotics, they can be submitted electronically to whatever pharmacy the parent chooses. It's just like.
Who gives parental consent to kids that come in and make the appointment?
The parent, unless they're 16 or older, and then they can make their own appointment just.
Right, so it's, so it's just, it's, there'll be a separate phone line to call, something separate outside of that. So what I'm wondering is, you know, 15-year-old that wa, that, I don't know, their dad says put Robitussin on it and they want coding cough syrup, I don't know. So they're going to come in and go to the, to this clinic without parental consent? So how, I mean, is this working across for, even for the little kids?
Yeah.
And so you would have a parent that?
We would have parental consent before we find them.
Right, is it as a form that's going to be in like the back to school packet?
That's up to you guys.
Or is it as needed? I'm just wondering how, how you know you're giving this consent and where, when we were going to give it.
So, so if, so let's say it was, well, so my son will be, soon be 13, so he'd be underneath. So let's say he walked into the clinic, or said, "Teacher, I need to go see, I don't feel well." So he walks up, so would the typical first response be, okay, well, I see that you're not 16, so we've got to first somehow get that parental consent, is that, that's a little bit what you're getting at?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, yeah.
So it would be, let's call your dad, and he goes, "Oh, wait a minute, that's, I know, I didn't need to really be seen anyway." Or it's like, "Oh yes, I feel terrible, please call dad."
Yeah, and typically, in, in a lot of situations, the school nurse is kind of going to be the triage for that. So Johnny comes in and, you know, "I don't feel well," but there's really nothing wrong, he just doesn't want to be in class.
Yeah.
She's going to be able to handle that, but if it's more severe, like, you know, I think they might have strep or something, yeah. Then our nurse can kind of come in and take care of that.
So the, as I'm listening to, of course, me, I mean, community care a lot of times, and most of the time, I think that our experience has been, it's more so been for services that it might be lower income, which I know that you all provide a lot of community care services for our students. This to me, and I'll just throw it out there, this sounds a whole lot like mirroring a little bit of what city schools have done with, what was it, Bardstown Pediatrics, or I forget what the, the name of that group is, which has been a huge customer service piece for the students and the families and the staff at the city schools. So this gives us an opportunity in a much more spread out scenario, instead of just being on one campus like they are. We'll provide this to our students throughout the school.
Absolutely, and you know, I think it's really going to benefit the outlying schools too.
Yes.
Where the city schools are all together and the doctor's offices are very close, you know, it's going to be a lot more beneficial.
But like you were saying, even then in that scenario, it's still, the parent has to come, has to check the kid out, has to drive over, has to sit in the office. Whereas I'm also, especially thing like in the Boston area, New Haven area, even Bloomingfeld area, that adds an extra 30 to 45 minutes, and can I get the kid in? So this is really going to be providing that additional level of service to our students and since that.
So one of the things that I knew was in here, and it took me a minute to, with Carlos' help to find it. This, on page two, the second sentence under bullet number one there, the parent must accompany client for the initial appointment. If I recall, I asked several questions about this, and I spoke with her earlier and said, I apologize for the skepticism that I sent their way repeatedly, because my first read on this was, this is too good to be true. This is, we're really excited about it. But can you talk to us a little bit about how that might be managed? Because it seems like at some point, we've talked about whether we can collect some of that preauthorization at open houses or maybe through the online profile piece, I'm not sure about that. But what have you guys looked at in terms of what needs to happen for that piece?
So that's kind of similar to our psychiatric services too. We, we say that parent must accompany, but sometimes we meet the parent prior to and get that authorization, especially for a school-based therapy client. And then we grab the kid from class when they're available and do the rest of the intake type paperwork. With the medical, it's really important to get parental, not just consent, but I mean, we need to find out if Johnny has allergies to penicillin or, you know, latex, and those are going to be important. I know you guys as a school district probably collect some of that as well. But if our provider is going to be treating them medically, they need to be aware of histories and allergies and things.
So as this initiative develops and grows, and I mean, I know there's going to be some learning opportunities in it. In theory though, could it get to the point, like, I mean, I've got a child that's got five more years in the school system here, that I could, ahead of time, say, here's the medical history, and if he does get sick during the day, and it's truly sick, not just for him to be in the back, then you've already got that parental authorization to go ahead and treat.
Right.
If it is, you know what, there's an infection we're noticing, a temperature, whatever, calling in or electronically sending that prescription. Of course, I'm being notified, but, and not that I don't care about my kid, but you know what, sometimes a code's a code and there's nothing I really can do for it as a parent, other than to say, suck it up, buttercup.
Right.
But that you can go ahead and be doing that, so then I can pick up the prescription on the way to get the kid and.
Absolutely, and so the beauty of the online medical records is that we have all of that. So if I see your kid this year, next year, I still have that information.
And you still know he's allergic to this.
Right.
Or that he's had this consistent infection every year.
Right.
There's something else going on here.
And then, you know, similar to when you guys go to your doctor, there's going to be a certain set of paperwork that you'll have to update every year.
Health insurance.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so, so even, I'm sorry. In regards to the prescribing medication for the 16-year-old who is allowed to walk in on their own without parental consent. So when it comes to narcotic medications, they will not be prescribed through the clinic, that they would have to go to an actual physician to get that and?
We don't prescribe narcotics.
That, that, okay, okay.
No controls.
I don't go enough, I don't go to the doctor enough to know who does what and when. So I just wanted to just kind of, you know, put it out there.
Because that would be a question from parents going, wait a minute, you're going to let my 17-year-old junior get whatever?
Right, yeah, get the cough syrup with the coding and, and, you know, they're going to, you know. I know a lot of those things, there's a lot of regulations that I don't even know about. There are so many regulations around those type of medications these days.
I just want to kind of rest the parents' mind.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Dr. Sear, I'm honest, I mean, it's pretty, I mean, there's a lot of questions for me, I mean, I won't ask them all tonight, but you mentioned therapy and stuff, is that where, is this for special needs children, that, you know, walking therapy or?
No, mental health, mental health counseling is our other service that we provide, which is separate from this agreement. But we have school-based therapists in each of the schools.
Okay.
So they see kids during the day if they have behavioral issues at school or emotional issues that are impacting their education, things like that.
Okay, all right. Thank you, really excited about it.
Can, can I ask, in this, I curiosity, so whose idea was this?
Mine.
Thank you.
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
And, because I have, I have had some folks ask, you know, I know former board member Marjorie Bradford, Brooks and Bradford, I do listen every now and then. That, that was one of her big pushes while she was on the Board of Education at Bardstown City Schools, is student health, because we know if students or employees are healthy, they're more likely to be there, they're more likely to be more conducive to learning and so on. And whenever the city schools, a couple of years ago, I think it was, started that initiative with Bardstown Pediatrics, you know, while there could be some skepticism, they were all so, hey, this is great, it's convenient. And I've had a few folks, a few parents with kids in our school system ask for something similar. One of the challenges, of course, is single campus versus many campuses.
Right.
And it sounds like, not to put words in your mouth, you don't care that there's many campuses. You're going to try and figure out a way to start and then make it grow as that need arises.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that.
As there's need, I can obviously easily justify additional staff.
And we've asked also for her to provide, and Tim and I discussed her yesterday, is basically a shopping list or a price list for, because we require physicals for all the people that we hire and pay for some of those, and vaccinations, all kinds of things that will benefit as adults besides our children and for convenience and all for our people.
What?
This would be a great service for our teachers.
Yeah.
This is great for them to get some help.
So student physical, off the top of your head, what's the cost for student physical? Okay.
But that's what we hit her with yesterday.
Yeah, and I'll tell you the reason why I ask, because again, so as my example, my son will be attempting to play soccer at high school, he's got to have a physical. I can make an appointment with his pediatrician, which may be two or three weeks out, or I paid just a flat fee, we went to the little clinic at Kroger. You know, what if this could have, and I wasn't the one that would take them, I had to ask my mom to take them. But if this was something at the school, I could have said, okay, here's the check signed, I filled out the request, go take care of it today at school.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, one-stop shop.
Yes.
So we'll bring a decision paper for you to, or to approve this if there's no other questions. Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Absolutely.
At Guthrie Center is our DHLU corporation. Our, we have three clinics in Bardstown.
Okay.
On Ford Street and over by Bedlam.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the sick bank summaries?
Yes, ma'am, as you can see, in the certified sick bank, we're pretty healthy. We have 92 and a half days. The classified sick bank is getting pretty low. So we're going to have to, we're going to have to make a decision on that. We have a couple of options. One, we can go back out to our folks and ask them to donate again. Or we can, we have a choice as a district to not have it. So we could not have a classified sick bank if we decided through our people that they don't want to have it. They would still have the ability to donate to one another, that wouldn't change any of that. And my intention, as soon as we get people back in-house where we can do this, is send a letter out, or getting close to being back where we know everybody's hired, send a letter out to all of our classified folks and ask them what's their, what's their choice, what do they want to do? Either way, for us, it, it doesn't change. And where the majority of the days, as you can see, it didn't start with a lot. Where the majority of our days is our classified, folks are real generous with one another with donating days. So that's where the majority of the days flow back and forth is if we, we have a bus driver that uses them all up and gets ill, and we send out a request, they'll, people step up.
Without going through the bank.
Without going through the bank. So a lot more days change hands than that shows, is my point. And a lot of that is donated days that we just would send out and say, you know, Mr. Mendez.
Let's all help out Bob.
Yeah, so. And we, of course, there's some rules behind it, we don't just, they have to have a documented reason before we ask. But, so, right now, I'm not asking, this is just awareness for you, I'm not asking you to make any approvals either way on it. But just so you know, when you see those nine days, that's something we're going to have to talk more about, and we want to get input from our staff before we really have some serious conversations with those.
A question that I'll pose on this one is I read recently Franklin County school system did away with their sick banks.
Quite, quite a few have.
Okay, I, I think at some point that if that come, if, if polling staff and staff are split, skewed one way or the other, I'd be curious to understand and know a little bit more behind the rationale of like the Franklin County and the others, which, not necessarily now, but, but just understanding that concept.
This is extremely low sampling, so whether it's the attitude of all of our people or not, I can tell you, asking a few of our classified folks here, they said, you know, this is like the third time we've had to restock bank, and I've never used from it, I'm just not really interested in doing that anymore. And that's, but that's a very small example. So overall, that may not be the attitude.
Okay.
You know, so I, before I really said that, I said I'd like to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just curious though, you know, that the, what's maybe driving this in some other districts as well? Which I wondered if what you were saying, there might be some of the underlying bid.
I think so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I was about to use 10 sick days in 10 years.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Oh. Yeah, policy and procedure update.
You've got a full stack of them there. I surely don't intend to ask you to go through all of those. In fact, we'll, we'll go through a few, and then I do have a place that, with your permission, I would like to stop, just because Dr. Orr and I were talking, and he brought up some questions honestly I couldn't answer. So if I can't answer him, I want to make sure I've got all the answers for you before I ask him to approve anything. So we'll just start with the first one here, and just to give you an example, when you see it in orange, it's mainly just some verbiage changes. When you see it in blue, it's some additional change, you know, things added to it. And so 52, safety, we don't move children around very often at that age, you're talking about the preschool children. When we do, we do have car seats for them. We'll have to do it a lot less now that we've got Cox's, or got Foster Heights and all back. That's where we end up doing it more, because whatever, we'd have to transport, you know, transporting them over there. But we probably only do that rarely, but they do have car seats.
Excuse me, let me ask something.
Uh huh, yes, ma'am.
On that very first page, is uniform guidance?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is that talking about the same thing I'm thinking about?
It's federal funds received of a district, we, we have.
Okay, that, we're not talking about the same thing.
No, no.
Move ahead.
We're just required to use certain rules with those monies.
That's why I'm saying that, that's okay, just go ahead.
Page 53, there's not much addition, if you turn it over to 54, it says that we will. It says that we will not provide notice to how our, you know, meal accommodations split grievance. So we already do that, we're going to have to adjust the ways we do that because we don't send out packages anymore. But it's to let our parents know if they have agreements, that they've got a place to address it with the foods. On page 55, that we have to make sure that they all know what the prices are, they're aware of those, you know, those are things that we've always done by practice. Talks about just if parents have not contacted you back, it's just some more verbiage they added there. But again, those are all things that we have done by practice, just letting parents know if they're delinquent and so forth. If no questions concerned, I'm just going to kind of keep flipping. Page 56 talks about vending machines. We used to talk about our state requirements and the federal requirements. Now our state requirements match the federal requirements, so we no longer have to mention those, we just go by federal requirements, so that's where those changes are. Page 58, you've probably seen recently some of the legislations and talk about non-discrimination against people having a political view or religious view. 58 talks about not penalizing a student if they have a religious view or a political view that basically a teacher doesn't agree with. And so I think we don't do that, I don't think we would by practice, but this puts in writing that we're not allowed to do that. And I've had, I've talked with both their directors, and they assure me that, yeah, but, you know, I guess it could happen. If it happened somewhere, it wouldn't have been written.
Well, our governor put that in.
Page 59 talks about graduation requirements in the civics test. Our staff members that are being involved in that are in training in the Lisbon Town this week on writing that civics test and the things they need to know to properly administer that. So I, we're on, underway on taking care of that. Just some additional, page 60, children that are in state custody, gives them a right to go ahead and seek a high school equivalency diploma when they're 17. I guess trying to encourage them to go ahead and move forward with their lives a little Page 62, on to 63, talks about dual credit and scholarship programs. Basically, down at the bottom of 63, it says, "We will follow Kentucky Dual-Credit Scholarship Program and follow the guidelines in Kentucky Council post-secondary schools." We do that, and as Ms. Brown pointed out earlier to you, that she's going to have later on in the year, a presentation to you with some other dual credit and advanced credit options, you know, so. Page 64, extended services, basically talks about some additional monies that can be received if you're in these lower tiers. Two things this makes is not really apply to us, is one is thank goodness we're not in those lower tiers, and two is that testing is not in place as of yet. So it's coming, but it is really just that verbiage saying that additional title and monies are be available to schools, districts that fall in those lower tiers based on that testing. And the last one I'd like us to cover, and if it's okay, is our Title I. We've always been inclusive. When we talk about Title I, we don't talk about just parents, but this verbiage here adds that we do talk about guardians, grandparents, the, kind of the whole picture, you know, because as we know, fortunately and unfortunately, often our children are being raised by somebody than other than their biological parent. And so that's a lot of what this is, talks about this, the verbiage, if you see through it, it adds "and" the family, or adds family engagement throughout that verbiage, and I think it's a good thing, and it's something we've always done by practice. Any questions on that? So that's all I'd like to bring to you tonight, and we'll continue at the next meeting, that 'll give me opportunity to get some more clarification on a few of these, where I can answer your questions.
And those are all first readings?
Those are all first readings.
Correct.
Yes.
Any other questions, Karen?
Thanks, sir. I know y'all would love to go further.
Don't make us stop.
But, uh...
I figured there's no place to stay.
I appreciate Bob working with me to make sure we knew a little more detail on implementation for some of these things before we brought them to you, as a policy revision.
So then next up is our student and stakeholder engagement, and now it's time for guest comments. Anybody that needs to make a guest comment? Okay, alright, so then I need a motion to adjourn regular session.
Motion.
So Mr. Mormon made the motion.
Sure.
Mr. Jackie second, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries, and we are going to convene into executive session, so I need a motion to convene executive session for, I got to read this whole thing, don't I? For KRS 61.8101F and KRS 156.5574D for formative evaluation discussion of the superintendent. Motion. Ms. Berry made the motion.
Second.
Ms. Di second, all in favor. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.